I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the October 19th regular school board meeting. Welcome to all of those of you who are with us, and welcome to our delayed broadcast audience, and our live stream if we ever get it working. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. From my right, oh, he's not there. Bob Untiet will return. Sean Heitman. From the left is Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, and Sarah Falters. And at the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schutie, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm Bea Niblock. If you would like to address the Board during public comment time, please sign up on the pink sheet on the speaker's table. You'll be given five minutes to address the Board. According to Board policy, we will not be able to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them. Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown Community School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Falters, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries six-zero. Mr. Siders, you have some recognitions for us?
Good evening, everyone. We have with us tonight Merrick Jablonski. He's an MHS senior, and he has been quite busy with National Merit Scholarship events and has actually earned a couple of merits from them. So, one of them was a commendable student from a rural school district. I'm not sure how many are awarded of those nationwide, but it's a pretty exclusive group, and it's very impressive that we have an MHS senior who earned that recognition. And the other really big National Merit Scholarship event that Merrick's involved in is the National Merit Scholarship Contest, in which he is a semifinalist. So, we've had semifinalists in the past. It's an impressive, again, just another impressive accolade to his name. So, Merrick, if you want to just talk about, I know you told me a lot of work went in, right, to the scholarship contest?
So, with that National Merit Scholarship, the first part, or the semifinalist, that's based on the PSAT from last year, and then that goes through. And for the next step, which is finalist, I have to go through and submit an essay, a bunch of stuff about my schoolwork, about my plans for the future, activities, all that, and then I've had to submit that a few weeks ago, and then I'll get to know the results by February.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You've been with us a number of times for a variety of honorable sorts of things, so congratulations to you.
Best of luck with that.
Good luck. You've been here a number of times. You ought to be really proud of your academic success, and I'm sure your parents are super proud of you, too. Great job. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Merrick, in case his name is familiar, he does a, or he has done a Christmas light show, or a holiday light show every year, I believe every year, Merrick, for the past, for the past, what, four years now. It's impressive. I covered it when I was at the newspaper. It's really something to see, so it was a joy to watch, and I'm happy that Merrick is a student here at Marshalltown Schools. So, our next recognition is, Mr. Pedig is here, and he is going to talk about a very successful middle school state track competition we held.
Thanks for inviting me to talk about the state middle school meet. About six weeks ago, I was asked by the Iowa Association of Track Coaches if we would be interested in hosting this event. It's a fundraiser for our coaches' association, and it's typically held at Ankeny Centennial on their school grounds, and they didn't feel like they had room to socially distance this year, and they were very familiar with our facilities, and they said, "Your place would be perfect if you guys would think about doing this." So, we talked it over. We had several meetings online with them, and I asked them, "Well, you know, what are you seeing at cross-country meets that you're going to?" You know, it's outdoors, but we still want to be able to social distance and follow all the protocols. And I felt like all the meets that I've been to, people have been very, very safe, but I wanted their opinions from around the state, since we were going to be inviting people from around the state. And after several conversations, we kind of all agreed, I asked them to start paying attention, you know, "What went to these other places you're going to?" And when they did, we had another meeting and said, "You know, everyone's kind of following the guidelines." I think cross-country parents in general are health-oriented, they're runners themselves, and so that kind of helps that they're involved in stuff like that. So then it was setting up our course and trying to figure out how, we're not confined to bleachers, that's what helps, but that also means people want to be able to see their child run. And so, our course is not very spectator-friendly in the fact that it only has about four good viewing spots for the middle school people, and so that would not social distance. So, we, after several evenings of walking and trying to figure out how to spread it out, we found a loop, a way to get them to where they could spread out, and naturally parents want to take pictures, so if we could provide them a nice big opening to take their pictures, they were going to naturally spread out. And that's kind of how, that's how it worked. It was quite a success. We had 1,300 runners, divided over 12 races. The first race started at 10:00 in the morning, the last race started at 3:30 in the afternoon. There were 164 school districts represented. The benefit to Marshalltown is we did get a stipend to cover costs, and then we also got some of the parking and concessions. I did ask Mr. Isgrig this morning if it was worth it. I don't know the total. I asked him if it was worth our time and effort, and he said, "Absolutely." And so, that's kind of how, that's kind of how the day went. We had 60 volunteers that I know of. About 30 of them were C cadets. I don't think we would have been able to pull it off as smoothly without Mr. Goslinga and his C cadets, because they took over parking, which was huge. That allowed me to focus on the meet management, and our high school cross-country teams had volunteers, we had cross-country parents volunteer, other coaching staff members from other sports, from the athletic department volunteered. So, overall, it was a pretty good day, had lots of compliments from other coaches, and even got a text message from an old, from a college roommate late Saturday night, who wasn't at the meet, but his neighbor was. And so, they made the connection, and Kyle said, "Well, I think I know who ran that, who's in charge of that." And so, that was kind of, that was kind of neat. So, the word out there was that it was a pretty good event for us, and hopefully some good publicity for Marshalltown as well.
Well, Marsh Town's always been really well situated to host such events, and Chad had talked to me, I don't know, it was probably a month ago when we were together at a football game, about you having, I think first you talked to me about having had the opportunity presented, and then you talked to me about after having accepted it, and I had kind of forgotten about it. And then I had a friend text me on Saturday and go, "What in the world is going on at MCC? I've never seen so many cars there." And then it dawned on me that that was the day of the meet, so...
Yeah, we kind of anticipated about 1,000 people, and we had 1,300. As of a week ago, the registration ended last Monday. The week prior, on that Monday, there were only 800. And so, we were thinking, "Okay, this is perfect. By then, we'll get to 1,000 instead 500 kids registered in a week," which, there was a little anxiety over that at first. When they sent me that on Thursday, they said, "Hey, here's your final participation numbers." But it worked out, like I said, it kind of, our course is perfect for something like that. We have the nice, big, wide, open field, and we put the T-shirt stand in one spot, concessions in one spot, registration, so those lines never crisscrossed and stuff like that, and team camps were, it was windy, that was the other thing that helped, is no one wanted to hang out very long after their race. So, that helped us a little bit, too. But I think overall, it was a pretty good, pretty good event for us and for Marshalltown and our athletic department, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the help, Mr. Miller.
We do have a bonus recognition tonight, so this week is the beginning of National School Bus Safety Week. We are, I mean, obviously, school bus safety is a huge priority every day as we drop off our students at school, and as they are picked up from their homes, and vice versa at the end of the day. And so, we just want to take this opportunity to remind folks to be extra vigilant and maintain caution anytime you're around a school bus. You don't know when it's going to pull over and stop. And of course, the big rule is when those red flashing lights start and the stop sign comes out, it means you have to stop. You can't buzz around it. It's not safe to do. We have students, and we need to make sure their safety is put first, so, yeah. With that, I believe that's it for recognitions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of October 5th? Any items of note and personnel, Dr. Ryan?
No.
Looking at inter-agency agreements, we have a number of them. Computer Science Award Agreement with the Iowa Mathematics and Science Education Partnership. We have an education affiliation agreement with the University of Northern Iowa Social Work Department for student social work field experience. We have a proposal submitted by Child Abuse and Prevention Services in the area of school We have a memorandum of agreement for the 2020-21 school year for College Access America, AMERACOR program. A data sharing agreement with them as well. An agreement with FEH designed to perform the preliminary designs and cost estimates for air conditioning at the high school, an HVAC overhaul at Anson Elementary, and the construction of a tornado safe room at the stadium complex, and one Level One student to Woodward Granger. Are there any questions on those? We have a change in receiving school for open enrollments, but no new ones. Are there any items of note and bills?
No.
Any questions by the Board in the financial statement? Looking at disposition of obsolete equipment, we have a couple of trucks and a snow blade. We have a Board Director resignation by Mr. Untiet. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, Untiet.
McGinnis, Untiet, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six-zero. Dr. Stevenson, are you beginning our Return to Learn presentation?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Is there anybody on the sheet, guys?
No.
I didn't think so. Now you can. Well, she's not there.
I can hear you.
You can?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right, Dr. Stevenson is about to present, and as long as you're able to hear, I think we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be presenting a Return to Learn update, specifically looking at our hybrid programming for grade 712, as well as our virtual learning for pre-K-12. I will launch our presentation, and then we have principals here from Lenahan, Miller, and the high school, both in person and on the phone, who will give you some more specific building-level updates. And so, we're happy to be here, and we know today marked the beginning of Week Six for us of this semester, of which is 18 weeks long, so it's a good chance for us to stop and see how things are going in terms of our virtual learning and hybrid learning. The next slide we'll show you. The first two slides talk about our elementary and secondary virtual learners, and as a reminder, our pre-K, can you hear me okay with my mask on? Yes. Our pre-K-5 learners are using a program called Edgenuity that is part of the Iowa Consortium, and it allows for students to have asynchronous learning, and they are registered for six different courses. This was a much more popular option than we had originally thought it would be. As you can see there, we have roughly between 80 and 110 students per grade level in K-5 whose parents elected to do virtual learning 100% versus the district plan. That also includes 41 preschoolers, which gives us a rough total of 587 students, of which 222 of those students qualify for English Language Learner Services, so they also receive a daily English lesson, English language development, that happens via Google Meet, a different program than Edgenuity. Our student-teacher, our teacher-to-student ratio is around 1 to 40, and then, I didn't finish the dash there, sorry, it's 54, which is, as I said, much larger than we would like it to be or hope it to be, but that is what our enrollment dictates. Secondly, you can see there on the right side, our virtual teachers. So, what we did was take 17 of our first-grade teachers, look to see who had requested to teach virtually and/or was interested, and then, in some cases, assigned teachers. But we have two teachers per grade level at K-5. And then we also have two half-time teachers that are serving our preschoolers. For our English Language Services, every building has a grade level that's been assigned to support one grade level of learners. Matt worked with endorsements, teacher endorsements and program needs, to identify students with behavior learning or Level Three disabilities. And then our XLP, which is our Gifted and Talented Program, also is working to serve our students who have chosen virtual. So, with that being said, with our littles, our younger students that are in virtual learning, how are they doing? Not as well as we would like, to be honest. I have some concerns that we are in, at the end of Week Five, we only had about 17% of our enrollments where they needed to be. So, that's, yeah, so about 80% of our kids are behind at that level. 25% of our course enrollments in grades K-5 are not at 10% or more syllabus progress either. And then, today, I just double-checked, so you won't see this in your notes, but I wondered if parent-teacher conferences would have any impact, which was last week, on how kids are doing at home. You know that effect, right, Mom and Dad here? You're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. And so, interestingly enough, it did jump from 19% to 27% of the kids are on track to be done at the 18-week mark. So, that was encouraging news, for sure. And as a reminder, we had to use, well, we didn't have to use, but we chose to use Edmentum, which is a different but similar program for grades 6 through 12, primarily because we were already under contract with them, and we had licenses that had already been purchased. So there, you'll see on slide, next slide, please, Matt, or whoever's...
Lisa, is that why you did the K-5?
Yeah.
That's why you split Lenahan in two, because half of Lenahan virtual learners on one platform and half of Lenahan on another platform?
Correct.
Gotcha. Sorry.
No problem. And then for Edmentum, that's our grade 6 through 12, and our sixth grade was the grade with the greatest interest district-wide in being virtual learners, fun fact. And you can see there, as they get a little bit older, there was a little bit less interest in virtual learning. Of those 673 students, 183 of those students still qualify for English Language Learner Services, so are also getting support from teachers in our ELL department. And then you can see, we were able to pull some, a variety of combinations of teachers. The ratio at our 7 through 12 is approximately 98 to 1, teachers, student to teacher, which is higher than we would like, too, but we also had to ensure that we had enough sections in the buildings that, with small enough case numbers, so that we could spread out our students. As far as Edmentum goes, we have, in sixth grade, we had about 19% of our courses that had 0% engagement, so that means students have not logged on and done any work in those courses as of last Friday at Board Docs. In seventh and eighth, we had 13% of our courses that had 0% engagement. And then that drops at high school, thank goodness, because that's where they're earning credits, down to 9% of our students had not engaged. Now, this is alarming for sure, but I do want you to know that there have been heroic efforts going on, not just at 612, but at K-5, with teachers, principals, counselors, student resource specialists, paras, you name it, going out, making visits, making phone calls, sending texts, using Language Line, really just getting out there. Our tech department has been all over the place, trying to troubleshoot if these were technology issues, which in general, we found out they were not, to get the kids to recognize that this was a commitment they made, as well as their families. All right. Now that I've shared the virtual update, I'm going to let, go on to the next slide, please, and we're going to see from the principal's side some of the data they have to share regarding attendance in hybrid and virtual engagement, student engagement, student achievement, that would be letter grades like Ds or Fs, and then behavior referrals. Mr. Young, do you want to come up for the next slide? Would you like us to do all the questions at the end?
No, as we go.
Take them as we go.
If there are questions, as you go, I'm sure there'll be questions at the end, but go ahead and take them.
Thank you.
Are there any?
Next slide, please.
So, at Lenahan, we are not in the hybrid model. You're either onsite fully or taking the virtual option. But I wanted to share a little data that we have gathered to kind of compare apples to apples from the, from the beginning of the year last year. So, through our first, this is a little dated, but through our first 25 days of school, in 1920, we had 41 students that had already missed four days or more, and four of those students had missed eight days or more. Compare that to this year, and our attendance is obviously, there's more students that have been gone. We have 60 students that have missed four-plus days, and 13 students missed eight or more days. So, our virtual students are, as mentioned previously, are engaging not only in the Edgenuity or the Edmentum program, depending on what grade they're on, they're also engaging in daily Google Meet sessions with their assigned teachers, which are recorded, and they're not required to be there at that time, too, they can access them later, but a lot of our kids are joining at the time that they're assigned, so they can interact with their teachers. They're doing, you know, their ELL lessons, their XOP lessons. And one of the things that I was mentioning earlier was that some of our courses for our kids who are brand-new to virtual learning, they're engaging in particular courses, but not maybe all of them at the same time. So, they might be really drawn to the arts and the science class, and they're really going hard on that, but they haven't, haven't been engaging in their, you know, reading course as often as they should have, or some of them haven't engaged in that course at all. So, we're learning a lot right now, and making sure that kids are, we're kind of closing some courses off to them and saying, "You didn't lost your work, but you can't do this course anymore. You need to go to your math course. You need to go to your science course." So, that's something that we're learning, how to navigate as well at this level. Another piece that I wanted to share with you is just some achievement data comparing beginning of last year to this year. One thing that I always thought was a pretty phenomenal achievement was that in 1920, we had, in our default assessment, that we have to have everybody, we try to get everybody assessed, that we had 98% of those students were assessed or screened in 1920, and in 2021, even with 230 students offsite, we had 97% of our students screened, which our goal for the state is 95%, and I thought we wouldn't make it. I was like looking through the logistics of that, kind of freaking out. But we did, and I think we probably even have more than that now. And our proficient rate was the same between the last two years. And our in-person and virtual differences were within 1% of one another, too. So, our students, whether they were in-person or virtual, did very comparable. That's...
Was that reading, Kyle?
That's a, that's a reading assessment, correct. That is, that's our literacy assessment. And that's the thing that we did universally for all students. We tried to get, because that's our requirement, to get all students assessed on this reading. We got a lot of our students assessed with the math portion, but we really put a lot of our emphasis on getting everybody screened for a literacy assessment.
What do you think about the reading?
Yeah. It's, it assesses all elements of reading.
Thanks, Kyle.
Questions? No? All right.
Secondly, we have Miller. I think Kristen is going to talk about Miller's virtual learners.
I'd like to thank the Board for allowing us to kind of share what's happening at Miller. I think before I even start, I would like to share that, you know, this is completely new for our students, and a really big shift for them, moving from voluntary in the spring to required, but then also, being on Edgenuity is very self-motivated, and it is very individually-focused. And so, for a lot of these students, it is completely new, and something that they've never really done. So, when you kind of look at this data, I think you have to think about that, and think about these seventh and eighth graders completely changing how they've done school for their whole life, essentially. So, I really want to give props to the students that really have been engaging in this work, and really putting in a lot of effort. So, when you look at attendance and engagement and achievement, it looks different online, and we can't really compare it apples to apples with what's happening in the classroom. And so, we've kind of rolled all of that into one, that attendance, that engagement, and achievement for our virtual learners. So, 51% of our students in seventh and eighth grade are either on pace or ahead of pace, so 44% on pace and 7% that are ahead of pace, adding to those that are just slightly off pace, which is about 32%. So, we have 83% of our students that are fully engaged in their virtual learning, and 17% that aren't fully engaged. When you... When you really break it down even further, which isn't there, we pulled this data today, we have about sixteen seventh graders and about eighteen eighth graders that have made zero percent progress. And this is our targeted group, and if we could pull that data, most likely, some of these kids were probably some of our chronically absent in the past, and so their learning now is reflecting that. Two or three of these students have actually already returned to school because they weren't engaging in the virtual learning, and so they're coming back to school in our hybrid system. Grades are a little different as well, because they're a progress, and they're not final. Students can choose to focus on one class, and really hone in on science, and not work in language art, or not work in science. And so, it looks like they're then failing, but it's just because they're focused on one class at a time. If you could look at Edgenuity, there is this little running man, and he's green, or he's green, is, you're on pace, and then when he's running, you are ahead of pace, and then when he's orange, and kind of moving backwards, you're behind pace, and then when you're red, you're not on pace. And so, some kids get really anxious when they see the orange or the red man, and so they really just want to stay on green. So, we kind of have students engaging in all different ways. So, when you look at the grades currently, we have twenty-six percent that have an A, fifteen percent that have a B, six percent that have a C, seven percent at a D, and forty-six percent currently at an F. You know, there's building-level efforts to engage parents and students and kids with phone calls and texts and emails, letters. We've had, we've had numerous home visits as well, and helping kids with connectivity, if that's their issue, having Google Meets, and then we just had conferences this week. As Lisa noted, our teachers are ninety-three to one at Miller, so they are working really hard. So when we did conferences, we split it up, and Dave and I actually had the honor of doing some of these conferences, because we can see how they are doing. And, and conferences went really well. We, as of right now, we have about sixty percent of our families that are virtual that engaged in virtual conferences, and we thought that was a really good number, and it was really great to kind of share the progress and see what some of the concerns were with the virtual learning. And so, really big props to our teachers and our students for really engaging in this completely new avenue of learning, and props to our parents that are supporting those kids, and to the teachers that are working and having Google Meets. They have Google Meets to engage the students, our special ed teachers meet with them weekly, and then our ELL teachers, they meet with them twice a week, doing junior scholastica, and then some course-specific conversations for those dual-language students that are, have chosen to be virtual.
How often are these kids meeting with their teachers on the...
Some of it is really dependent. For special ed, they're meeting weekly. For ELL, they're meeting twice weekly. Beyond that, it's course-specific as to what they need. Some of the teachers have office hours. I know our ELA and math have office hours. Some are just, like Mr. Spear and Mr. Gilbertson are really available whenever they need them. So, I couldn't give you a specific thing. Some are daily, some are once a week. It just really depends on the student and their needs, and how much they're seeking out and advocating for help. When we did conferences, we kind of created a spreadsheet that was available, so I had a young lady that needed assistance with science, so I just made a note, and so then that would be something that Mr. Spear would reach out to her today and, and set up a Google Meet with them.
I think it's fair to say that, you know, there are some, and some that came out in conferences, too, that hadn't had any contacts with their teachers as far as getting with a meet, but the student is reporting, "I'm good. I figured this out. I'm working six hours a day. This is what I've got, and their progress is there, their grades are fine, they're making their way through, and they're just so..." You know, it's not a blanket, "You're gonna meet with your teacher this many times a week, or quarter, or a month, or whatever." It's just as needed.
And I think Dave sharing the time, just so you're aware, we encourage our students to work about four to five hours a day on the content, which, that's a lot of time to be on a computer, that four to five hours. So, we think that if, if they spend that four to five, they're really gonna be making the progress that they need. The science course is, is, is heavy, and so there's a lot of reading and a lot of content to it. So, for some of those students, they really do have to hunker down and read that content and engage in it, and those are the students that are kind of reaching out for assistance when they kind of get in the heart of that.
We are doing a daily classroom meet at K six, at PK six, and actually, some teachers do morning and afternoon, because it works better for the kids' and families' schedules. But we were not able to guarantee that at Miller, because of the, the numbers of students that they're supporting, they're, I mean, they're just grading and working their tails off all day long.
Yeah, I guess, are your special education students hanging in there with the one meeting with your teachers once a week?
They are. They actually meet probably more than once a week, but that's when they have their, their setup meetings. Their caseload is probably eighteen, which is quite a few. And so, the teacher that is full special ed, full virtual, she meets, you know, quite a bit with kids. You know, we have, just like in the classroom, there's, you make modifications, and you make sure that that learning is geared towards them, they are getting grade-level work, but sometimes it's just looking different, just like it would in the classroom with some modifications, and some of the tutorials, and some of the mastery tests are going to look different for those special education students. So, it's really focusing on that content, and Edgenuity also has, where it could read it to them, it could highlight, there's lots of different tools that we've taught our special ed kids to really engage in as well.
So, can the special education teachers modify it in terms of...
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. Yep. I, that, the special ed team that Matt identified was, they were all over it, right from the beginning, wanting to like, have edit access and be able to say, like, "My students need to have these options removed, and have this shortened and modified." And so, yes, the Edmentum has been wonderful, and having Eric Gosling and Pam Brewer-Michael's experience with it, they were immediately able to tell Anita and tell the other teachers, like, "Oh, this is how you do that." And so, I feel, they're not getting as much, or like, in terms of daily, maybe, contact as the K six kids with IEPs are, but they...
Some are.
They have. Or some are.
Yes.
That's been, that was my experience last spring, it depends on the kid.
But they do have large caseloads.
And depends on the parents as well. Yep. And for some reason, I can't believe I kept saying Edgenuity, Edmentum, I apologize for that.
They're remarkably similar.
They start with E's.
On purpose, probably.
Lisa, before you go on, this is a dumb question, but I don't get it, so I'll ask it.
Okay.
You're only talking about, on this slide, the students that have selected the hundred percent virtual option.
Correct.
Will you talk, do you have a slide about how we're doing in the hybrid model?
Yes. Yep. We're gonna start with this, and then, it's like Wheel of Fortune, they'll be back up in a second, I promise.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
High school virtual is next.
Thank you.
Jackie, did you want to talk to that? Oh, here they come. Never mind.
Again, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to just kind of share some data with you. So we've got a little bit of a mix. I know Mr. Miller just kind of asked about comparisons between hybrid and virtual and whatnot, so we'll share a little bit. I've been asked to share specifically about the virtual learners, to give you guys a little bit of context. A lot of what Kristen just shared with you about Edmentum also holds true at the high school. I would definitely say, this has been a, a big learning experience for our students that chose the hundred percent virtual model, as well as the teachers that we have working with students, and it's been a process that we're going through. So, the data that we have to share with you, you'll notice, comes from the first three weeks of school year. We wanted to make sure that we had an apples-to-apples comparison. We just completed our six-week grading period, but our high school, six-week grades are not due until tomorrow. We're just finishing our B-day for our blue kids, so are finishing our seventh cycle for our students, so they're just finishing up really the last day of the six-week grading period to them, so we won't have all the student grades in for the first six weeks until tomorrow. So, we have our three-week data that we can share with you. So, looking at the failure rates, if you can kind of see that, doesn't really, if you compare last year's 2019, 2020 school year compares to our hybrid students compared to our virtual students, the data itself probably doesn't look all that positive, but I think you also have to keep the numbers in context and the situation, what's occurring there, and, and what does the data tell us? Well, data shows us at three weeks, that our failure percentages for our hybrid, as well as our virtual students, were higher than they were in the 2019, 2020 school year. But, thinking back, okay, where does that failure rate come from, and where does those grades make up? At three weeks, where do the grades consist of? Well, after three weeks, it's typically gonna be homework assignments, it's gonna be very little on, as far as, you know, a, a true summit of assessment of students' learning, it's gonna be very beginning. For our kids, this is, this is, just holds just as true. And Edmentum, for our virtual kids, you know, we've had to go through, and, and kids are figuring out how to work the system, how to go through, navigate, getting through their assignments. A lot of this has been, in Edmentum, self, self-driven learners. For a lot of our kids, this is, this is gonna be an adjustment period for them. They're working through, some of them have multiple classes they're going through, working how, building their student agency, and, and learning how to reach out for support when they're struggling, because they don't have the teacher in front of the classroom to ask questions from and, and to reach out for support. So that's something that our teachers have been working on, that's something that as administrators, we've been monitoring, as staff, we've really been having to work with our kids, both in the hybrid model, as well as the virtual model, on teaching them what it looks like to ask for help in this model. So, the first, first period didn't look great as far as numbers go. Those are something that we anticipate as we work with kids, and especially after conferences, we anticipate those numbers to improve. The other thing that I think you'll note, note, too, is, in Edmentum, as, as a teacher, you know, back in the classroom days, I spent two years working in this model, and working with, not Edmentum, but Edgenuity, they're very similar programs. Ultimately, in that program, kids are gonna pass. They can't move on unless they pass the test, the assessments, and whatnot, you don't let them move on. So the grades themselves, they'll continue to reassess, and they'll continue to go back, and you'll coach them up, and get them through until they pass the exam, that's how the process works, until they meet all the course area standards and assessments. So eventually, they'll get through and they'll pass the assessment. So, passing the class, it just depends how much time that's gonna take, and it's a serious, it's a considerable amount of time, seat time, for a kid to get through these classes. And that's one thing that our kids are coming to find, so as we look at the context of some of the data that Dr. Stevenson showed, you know, twenty percent of our kids not being at ten percent syllabus progress, well, you know, it's, in my experience, getting through a class is about forty hours of seat time, and for some of our kids that are enrolled in seven classes, that's a lot of time. What we're experiencing is that, looking at the data and seeing the kids that we have enrolled, there really isn't a great correlation between how much time they're logged in, how much time they're investing in a class, and how much progress they're making, because going through a module, and, and listening to a lesson, and, and watching a video may not, you know, while that may make up a chunk of their seat time, it's not gonna show a lot on their progress, it's not really till they get to their assignments, and their assessments, and their tests, that you're gonna see that jump in progress be made. So they may, they may have spent fifteen hours in there, and they may only be at, you know, twelve percent student progress, but when they get to that first test, all of a sudden, they might jump from twelve percent to twenty-five percent. The other thing that we're starting to see a lot is that, as kids are going through, they're really taking this independent learning model, and they're making it their own. They're not all, they're all not, it's not like being in a hybrid model, or in-person, where I've got a seven-period day, and I'm gonna go sit in all seven classes. A lot of our kids, where we have nine percent of students not engaged or not participating in a class, we have a lot of kids that have chosen to work on one class at a time, two classes at a time, and they may not be engaging in, in two, three, four, or five of their other classes, and that's fine. They're making great progress in the ones that they are, but they may not be engaging in some of the other ones. For some of our kids, they may be falling behind, they may have a couple of those little red little stick guys on their screen, they may have a couple guys in orange, and there's been a few kids, we've had to go back and pare down their course list and say, you know, "We signed you up for three electives, we're gonna take some of those off your plate, have you focus on the cores." And as they get closer on to that, and where we're, we'll kind of take a look at where we're at in the semester time, and add more as, as time will allow. So we've had to help kind of focus kids on, on that regard. But it's, it's, like I said, it's been a little bit of a learning curve, it's really kind of an individualized platform for kids, they're learning as they go. One thing we found, both for the hybrid side, as well as the virtual side, is we've really had to take the time and effort and be very intentional about teaching student agency and student efficacy, reaching out for that support side. On the positive note, we've seen student attendance go up amongst our kids, among the virtual side. You know, surprisingly, the number of kids that are logging on every day is, is on the high end. We have one hundred and thirteen kids that have logged on more than ninety percent of the school days. You know, in comparison to the number of kids that we have, that out of twenty-eight school days that we've had, and only have to show up fourteen days out of the week, plus the times they have virtual, we've got over ninety percent of the kids that have, have logged on more than twenty-eight days. So that's really impressive, in my, in my opinion. We also have a number of kids that have not logged on, not as much, but those are the kids that we're reaching out to that are doing interventions. For a lot of our kids, there's also ones that we're finding that maybe this isn't the best platform, and as administrators and as teachers, our teachers are reaching out, we're figuring out how can we best support them, whether it's through a Google Meet. For some of our kids, I know we're reaching out now, and there's some kids that we're gonna pull in for tutoring sessions and coach them up on how to be successful in this platform. There's other kids that maybe this isn't gonna be the best platform, and we're gonna pull them back into the building. And for some of our kids, specifically, like our kids on IEPs that aren't making progress, our teachers are working with those kids, and if we determine that this is not the best platform for them, we're pulling them back into the building, if, if that's, if that's what's in the best interest of their students. So we're being receptive to what kids' needs are. We're, we're trying to really tailor our practices, what's gonna help them be successful. And for the most part, I think our kids got off to a slow start, because it was such a big change for them, and as teachers, we're trying to refine our practices, because not all the teachers that, that, when we moved to this model, not all of our teachers have past experience working with this, so they're kind of learning as they go. But they're doing a really nice job adjusting, I think, the context with parents and contacting with kids, and making those connections, is, is really having a positive effect on kids. And it's kind of, it's, it's been really an interesting process to see how these kids are kind of navigating, because like I said, I taught in this platform for two years as an educator. It's not, it's not the best for everyone, but our kids are doing a remarkable job at the high school level.
Are you finding that the, the flexibility, the different ways they can do it, you're getting more kids engaged at the high, high school, because I do remember attendance was a big issue last year?
More engaged in the virtual model or the hybrid model?
More engaged in general, in both models. Because you have this flexibility, our students more engaged than they were at this time last year.
I think on the virtual side, I think that's, that's kind of a mixed bag, to be honest with you. I think for the kids that are really successful in taking to it, I think they're, they're really running with it, and they're, the kids that are doing really well are getting ahead. I think for some that are struggling, the ones that, that we're really having to put our intervention systems in for and possibly bring back, I think those kids, there's a little bit of struggle there, and just not having that disconnect, I think, is a little bit of a struggle, but I think we've got some plans in place to address those students. But I mean, those are students that selected to be a hundred percent virtual, so we have to work with those kids in, in that platform, and try to make it the best success for them. As far as the hybrid goes, I think engagement levels, I think that's been a learning curve, and we'll kind of address that a little bit more in the next one, but I think the, the biggest thing there is, we're trying to find the right balance in the hybrid section. Some of the feedback we're getting from, from the students, and we've done some thought exchanges with our students and asked them how that process is going, I think they appreciate the smaller class sizes, they've really taken to that. I think they enjoy the flexibility on the days off, being able to kind of work at their own pace. Some feedback that we've gotten from students, that as staff, we're trying to adjust to, Canvas as a platform is something that we've had to accelerate our implementation on. That hasn't always been the smoothest, but some things that as a staff, we've really focused on and worked on, is trying to be more cohesive as a staff on how we format that, so it makes it more accessible for kids, so that there's more easily accessible, knowing where to find their assignments, how to do things. We're also trying to find that balance of, how much is the correct amount of homework versus maybe how much is too much homework, because that's a little piece. We're, we're really not trying to recreate necessarily an eight-hour day outside of the school day for kids, because that's a bit overwhelming, so trying to find that perfect balance that keeps them engaged, instead of turning them off. But for the most part, I would say, from our staff, as well as our students, we've gotten some pretty positive feedback on the hybrid, on the hybrid side.
Do we save the hybrid stuff?
For the hybrid part? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the last virtual learner information is from MLA, and Eric had put a few notes in. I wanted to share with you, there are currently a hundred students enrolled downstairs at MLA. Sixty-nine percent of those students are coming in-person, and thirty-one are virtual. And Eric's data shows that the courses, the courses that have been completed thus far in these first five weeks are being completed at a much higher percentage by those students who are coming to the in-person hybrid model, as compared to the virtual learners, and the time on task or time engaged has been much higher for our non-virtual kids. So, I would say those are two things that are probably pretty concerning to Eric about those, for the kids being able to earn credit with that data. In summary, with virtual learning, I just want to remind you that we asked these families to make a semester commitment. We've been pulling these teacher teams, the Edgenuity team, the Edmentum team, together once a week in a virtual PLC. once a week in a virtual PLC for an hour, to ask questions, find out what's going on, get feedback from them. And we know that we've grown a lot in the last five weeks, but that there are some kids that this just isn't working for. And so at tomorrow, Tuesday's meeting, and it's Wednesday for the, this week for the Edgenuity folks, we're going to have the teachers view the usage and engagement and identify a top-five list per teacher, and then for secondary, it would be per course of students that will be getting a phone call, parents will be getting a phone call at the end of this week or next week with a script where they will walk through, you know, hey, we just talked to conferences, but here we are, and your child should be at 33%, he's at 2. And this is happening in multiple courses, not just one. We would like to recommend that when second quarter begins on November 9th, that your child come back 2 in-person, if it's a little kid, or hybrid, if it's a six, or 7-12 student. So that, I just wanted to let you know, is our next step with our virtual learners, because we did pay for licenses for these kids, but we also recognize that, you know, sometimes people make decisions that they don't fully understand, and we don't want the, and if the parent made that decision and the child is suffering, we want them to be able to make the most of second quarter and come back and try to recoup some of that loss they've had. So we're ready to go, hopefully, everyone back in person second semester. All right, that was virtual 7-12 hybrid. Next, as a reminder, we did not do hybrid at pre-K6, because we were able to do mitigation that allowed us to self-contain those children. So they are literally a bubble of themselves, those 20 kids, whoever their classroom teacher is, they are together for breakfast, for lunch, for every class, for recess, et cetera, which has helped greatly with mitigation efforts. That was not a possibility at 7-12, just because of the nature of the beast, right? They have to take all these different courses, which are taught by teachers with different endorsements. So with that being said, we went to hybrid, and the kids are not with the same kids all day long, but they're with fewer kids than had they been not in the block. So if you could go to the next two slides, please, Matt. This was just a quote I heard that I thought was worthy of, of your attention, because I feel like I've talked to you a lot over the years about concerns with student misbehavior and chronic absenteeism, and so those are one of the shining lights that we're seeing with our 7-12 hybrid. And then hybrid, on the next slide, what I just started to talk about, so this, this decision had a domino effect that we had to transition to a block schedule, which was quite a change for our teachers to learn how to teach in a double period. It created the red days, blue days, and then the need to use platforms like Google Classroom or Canvas for kids to get access when at school or at home. We did have professional development for teachers on September 1st, as well as September 28th, and we will continue that work on November 30th, trying to help problem-solve our teachers so that they feel prepared and ready to teach in the hybrid and teach in block.
Are they doing three blocks a day, or what are they doing?
Four blocks.
Four blocks?
Yeah, four blocks on one day and four blocks on the next day. All right, so hybrid, we have an update from Miller and an update from high school, and then that is it. I think, Mr. Glenn?
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity. Really, when we think about hybrid, if you take a look at that slide and we think about what is working, I mean, I think we would be remiss to not talk about the mitigation strategies that we've put in place when we think about the masks, the, the face shields, the desk shields, and the spacing that we have, coupled with block scheduling. So this alternate-day block scheduling really limits the number of times that students are changing classrooms. They're only going to four classes a day, kids are eating lunch in their classrooms. So they're coming down, they go to what we call their win period, which is a what I need period, and they're coming down to the lunchroom as a group, getting a to-go tray, eating that in the classroom, and then they're taking care of that, wrapping that up with that intervention block. And so it really, we have limited the number of times that students are in the halls together, we have limited the number of times that they're in open spaces. Historically at Miller, which is something that has kind of always been on everybody's list, is this gathering of kids out in front of the school prior to the school day, we're not doing that. So when kids are coming to cla, or getting, arriving at Miller, they're coming right into the building and going to their classrooms. And so really are trying to limit the, the amount of opportunities that kids have to come into contact with others, and so, and, and I think that's really, really working for us very well. Our teachers are really doing a good job with acknowledging students who are meeting our expectations. I know that, that Dr. Stevenson mentioned in the previous slide, that our attendance and our behaviors have gone, are significantly better than at this point last year. We, we just ran that, we have had one major event that involved two students this year, as of today. So in the, in roughly six weeks of school, we've had one major. Two kids got into a, a shoving match in a classroom, and that's it. Last year, just as context, last year, at this point of the year, at the same number of days, we had 23 majors, resulting in multiple days of suspension for a variety of, of reasons. So, you know, that's an 87% reduction in majors. It's not, it, it wasn't, it wasn't expected, but it's entirely welcome. It's not welcomed by the kids, it's welcomed by the staff, it's welcomed by parents. I mean, people have mentioned how, how much smoother things are running, and, and that's not just hybrid or block scheduling, it's also our continued efforts with our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports PBIS, and acknowledging students who are meeting our expectations in a positive way, and really trying to keep that four-to-one positive versus redirection-type ratio in place. And so we're doing, I feel like that's been what's really, really working well. Our teachers are working really, really hard on teaching in a block. Typically, you get a lot of staff development on how to teach in a block. I think I, I spent, as a, as a classroom teacher, I spent 16 years teaching in a block schedule. And a lot of that had to, with a lot of professional development around that, we asked our teachers to shift to that with about three weeks in the summer, hey, we're going to do this. If you took what you normally did and just tried to double it, you're going to have all kinds of disengagement from students. They're not going to, a, a, a seventh and an eighth grader, and I would even argue that a high schooler is not going to be able to sit and do the same thing for 90 minutes, 85 minutes. Our block periods are 85 minutes long. They're not going to sit for 85 minutes and do the exact same thing. So it's really about being very intentional in the tasks that you're asking students to engage in, the activities that you're asking them to do. Even if you just stop a longer activity, so if you think about your class period over 20-minute periods, you know, four 20-minute blocks of time within one block, and if you ask them to shift to something different, even if you have a 30 to 35-minute activity, just stopping your students, asking them to think about something else, it's just a, there's a, there's research that will indicate that that's enough of a brain shift to let them get right back into what they're doing and continue on that task, versus just saying, go. You know, they're going to get more off, off-task, and, and engagement decreases if you just give them something for the same time, or if you ask them to listen to you for 40, 50 minutes at a time. So, things that we have learned, things that we know that could still need some work. We learned early on that we weren't very consistent in sharing with students and their, and their families about what that, what those expectations or what those tasks were for the days that they were at home. We had some teachers that were calling those virtual days, and parents would see virtual and then think, oh, that doesn't apply to my child, they're not virtual. So they just didn't do them. We had some that were saying, you know, do this while you're here, and this is homework, and then there was a diff, there was a disconnect between that. So we have become crystal clear on our expectations with our staff, and we met with our BLT, we met with our whole staff. In each of our team meetings, we've decided that we are all going to talk about categories within Google Classrooms, everybody is going to look the same, where it says, this is your at-school work, and this is your at-home work. And understanding that I may have them, things to do when I'm at home, that were assigned during my at-school days. So I did something, I worked on an activity while I was at school, but that still may come with an assignment. So between an A day and a B day, we're trying to get kids into the habit now, anticipating that we'll be back and continuing in our alternate-day block schedule, where whatever I did on A day, I should do whatever's left, I should do that night, so that I'm not waiting until the end of B day and forgetting what I'm supposed to be doing for my next day. So it's a lot of routines and expectations and structures that we're teaching and reteaching and going over and over with students, to, to make things as, as consistent and predictable as possible. Same with families. And so we really, and we also had talked about, some groups, some PLCs in our building were using, they were calling a cycle, some were calling it a round, some were calling it a, what were some of the other ones? Cycle, round, set. And so we've been all talking about an instructional cycle now, and I think you heard Mr. Dale refer to it, we just started cycle seven. So we're just finishing up cycle seven today, so when you think about the different cycles, and that is something that's very consistent for all of our families and students and teachers now. So that's something that we worked on right away. What I think we still need to continue to work on is giving students or assigning students what they need, not just, not just responding to them what they need in school, but what they need at home. So some students may need more, some students may need less, just like we wouldn't expect anybody to come into a classroom and all 28 kids get the same thing and do the same thing throughout the entire period, every day, day after day. We know that some students, all they learn at different rates, and so one of the things that we are focusing on is, or we're continuing to, to think about is, what about those that, you know, we want to keep learning the constant and timing the variables, so as some students need a little bit more time, they might get a different assignment on their at-home days than other students who work at a faster rate. Just like if we were in class, 100%, if I give an assignment to all 28 of the students, 30 students in my classroom, some may finish that assignment in 10 minutes, some may finish it in 20 minutes, and some may be taking it home that night. It's just, that's a reality of teaching, and it's something that we need to respond to, but it's also something I think we really want to push our teachers to, and all of their PLCs and the work that they're doing, to try to be a little bit more predictive of what their students need on their days at home. So that's one of the things that we're thinking about.
And I think Google Classroom lends itself really well to that, doesn't it?
Agreed, yes, because you can assign it to specific groups. Yep, absolutely. So I know I mentioned behaviors a little bit, our attendance is a lot better this year. You know, I, I don't think it's news that attendance is something that we are, that we are always consistently working on and trying to approve. If you looked at, compared to 19 to 20, we had at this point of the year, around 20% of our students who would already be tagged at that chronically absent. So in other words, they've been gone, have been in school for fewer than 90% of the days. Right now, at Miller, that number is 12, 12%. So 12, so it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good jump of students who are attending more regularly. You could say, it's, it's a little hard, we made some, some significant changes, so it's hard to make a direct correlation as to what that, what that result is. Our tardies are significantly better, we have way fewer tardies right now than we did at this time last year. A lot of that is, if we, with an alter, with a block schedule, you have fewer opportunities to be tardy. You know, if you're only trading classes four times instead of eight, you have fewer opportunities to be tardy, so you would expect our tardy data to, to, to decrease. But it's also, I, I think it's a direct result that our students are moving and going to where they're supposed to be going. I mean, our, just as I mentioned, our behavior data is so good right now, our students are, I almost hate to say it publicly, but are, they're meat, they're doing exactly what we would expect them to do while they're with us, and so we just can't, can't, can't reinforce that enough, how, how well, how much of a difference that's made in our building. I think one of the things that's going well is our teachers are doing a good job of identifying right now what every student is needing in every class. You know, it, it's, it's pretty obvious when a student is not with you when you have a smaller class, if they're not following and not keeping up to be able to turn around and give them what they need in that block versus, I didn't, you may not notice in a class of 28, 29. So that also changes to what they're doing. What we'd like to see improve a little bit, and we're checking and we're going to run some numbers, we had talked about doing that this week, is during that intervention time, we want our teachers to meet with our students virtually. So historically, during that intervention block at Miller, if we identify a certain number of kids who see, need to see teacher A, they would get a pass and go to that teacher. Now we're just asking them to meet with them virtually. So everybody's staying put, but they're meeting with that teacher virtually. That also allows those students on their at-home days, they know between 11:30 and 12:30 every day, they can meet with their teachers virtually, through Meet. And so they have that opportunity, as if I have, I'm working on a mad home assignment and I'm not sure what's going on, I can know that I can connect with my teacher during that win time virtually. We want to make sure that we're doing that with fidelity, and so that's something that we're going to do some looking into this week to find out where we are.
Now, how does that work with, you mentioned last time, System 44, which is a specific intervention at the end of the class period. Is that happening during the win time, or is that part of a block? How is that working?
So, yeah, system, that's a good question, I'm glad you asked that. System 44 is, you know, it's an online program that we've always had, and it's always been online, whether we were onsite or at home. So students will be doing that both places, and those teachers will be making an op, will have an opportunity to connect with them, and it's typically just during that win time, yes.
Any other questions for Millers?
You have 50 words.
Oh.
You have 50 words to give us the most abbreviated...
I better do that.
You better let Kristen do that.
I mean, seriously, folks, you're losing us, what can I say? We've been at this for an hour. In the most abbreviated form possible, we need, and I know that other board members have this very same question, what has the three months that we did not have school and learning loss had an impact on your learning this fall?
I mean, it definitely has, because that, and that's been our shift, you know, a lot of people are saying, well, kids aren't doing things when they're at home, or some of those virtual learners aren't engaging. But when you've spent three months in a voluntary system, when you were at home and you weren't having to work, it's just a paradigm shift, and we're working really hard on that. And I would say that, you know, from beginning to now, our students are definitely engaging more when they're at home, and we're really focused on our teachers giving purposeful learning at that time. So they're engaging in new learning, they're, they're prefacing what they're going to be learning, they're reviewing, it's, they're making it really purposeful, so the kids know that they need to do that in order to be, be prepared for what they're going to be doing in the classroom. So did it do us any favors? It didn't, but we're really trying hard to come o, over that and above that, and really say that this learning isn't virtual anymore, and this is just like you were in school, and we need you to be engaged in that learning, it's just as important as what you did in the classroom, which you're going to do at home.
I can say it in even fewer words, it erased routines.
It did erase routines.
So routines that we had, routines that teachers and kids had were erased.
I think that that's something that somebody really needed to preface this whole discussion with, because the board needs to understand that when you're looking at letter grades and completion of work and et cetera, as the numbers you've been giving us, we have forgotten, many of us, that we lost three months of learning, and we're not just going to pick up from now, we're going back three months to get that learning, as well as the summer learning loss. So I think that needs to continually be a part of what we're looking at here.
It's an excellent point. We, 187 calendar days between in-person...
It's been a long, long time.
Any?
Go ahead.
I have received a, a lot of parent feedback on the hybrid model, and all of the parents that have talked to me are parents of kids at Miller, every one of them. And the feedback that I've received is uniform. Those kids need to be back in school, they are not learning, when they're at home, they're not doing anything. We need them back in school full-time, just like the elementary schools, just like East Marshall, West Marshall, GMG, VCL. What do you guys say to that?
I guess I can...
I mean, okay.
I wasn't asking you, I was asking her.
I mean, I guess I would say... I mean, I guess I would say. Given all things being equal, none of us want to not have our kids in school all the time. I think when we think about how do we do that safely? And how do we keep students and staff? I mean, I think that's when you look at what our numbers are and when you look at, you know, the mitigation strategies and that would include hybrid learning. I think it's hard to say that that hasn't been successful. Um, and so would we want our students in, 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 in school no less than we did all during closure? Right? But I think it, we want to do it safely. And we want to make sure that we're able to keep our spacing, keep kids safe. I mean, I, it's, that's, I guess that's my short answer.
And I think to go back to what B said, you know, those students not engaging, we've only been here for six weeks. And they had three months of not having to engage at home. So it is a culture shift, it's a paradigm shift. So, I mean, we just have to, you know, um, Dave has a, a young man going to another district. And he spends his Sunday nights going through what Theo needs to do at school and really focused. And so we do need that parent engagement of what do they need to do? Because I promise you, teachers are giving tasks, teachers are giving assignments, teachers are giving projects, teachers are giving, um, engaging activities for students to do. It's just that mind shift of it's not an option. This is just like being in school and it's something that's not going to change overnight. And we just continue need, to need to work with our parents and work with our students and, and our teachers and making that learning purposeful. And to go back to Dave, would we love our kids back every single day? Absolutely. But can I look at this and say that we can safely do this right now? I just don't know if we can. And that's what's most important to me is the safety of my kids and the safety of my staff.
I guess I'd like to also look at the other side of it because I just talked to a parent today who had exactly the opposite perspective. Her student, her child is doing very well with this model, they like the flexibility. The child's in school part of the time, but the child's at home part of the time. When that child's at home, that child can work her schoolwork around other things that the family needs. And they feel like this is working very well. They actually like this.
And we have students, we did a thought exchange with our students. And, you know, outside of the seventh and eighth grade, you know, we don't want to wear masks. But, you know, a lot of them said that they liked the smaller classes, they liked having more time in class to engage with their teachers. Um, which is crazy for a seventh and eighth grader to say, right, that they are really enjoying more time in their class. But they also have said that they like being to work at their own pace at home. Where, you know, for so long in school, we've been focused on 42 minutes or whatever it was. And we're at the, they're at home, if they are that slow learner, that slow worker, they have that without that timeframe. Um, you know, and if they work better at two in the morning, gosh darn it, that's when they can do it. And they can really engage in it what works best for them.
I think that, that's what makes us difficult. I think we tried to provide as best we could to meet as many parent, student and school needs as we could by offering. Different alternatives, um, from the beginning and, you know, to your point, Mike, because I've heard from some of those parents as well. I've also, I also heard from parents at the beginning of the year, at the elementary level, for example, or the K six level. That were not happy that we didn't go hybrid there. And consequently, they decided either homeschool or go virtual because of that. Because they just felt like there was a greater chance to protect the kids. And having them be there with half the kids, you know, part of the time in person. So it, it's a difficult situation because we know, I mean, our, our dad isn't that dissimilar to other districts that are in the same boat with. Hybrid that everybody that's doing it or doing the virtual learning has a certain percentage of kids that they're struggling to engage them and engage their parents. I am confident that our staff, our teachers, our counselors, resource specialists, principals, et cetera. Going to the nth degree to engage these kids. And we're approaching a time with the end of the first quarter where, you know, I think we're going to have to just be very clear with people. I mean, I think in some cases, virtual is not a good fit and those kids need to be back in school. For fear of failure or being retained or, you know, what have. Um, and I think for others, they need to recognize that they're, you know, by not doing what they need to do as students. Or by their parents not being able to get them to do what they need to do. When they're not in school, they're running the chance again of, you know, probably at best, having to take summer school to make up what they haven't accomplished. And at worst, to be considered either for retention or having to repeat courses and things like that.
But, but I would also say that that's not a problem that's new to hybrid. Right? That's something that we've worked on e- every year of my career in education, regardless of where it was. Is students not doing what they needed to do outside of school and then feeling like we're not getting that same sort of common support with. And they ultimately are falling behind, you know? And so that's, that's not new to hybrid, it's not new to Miller, it's not new to education in general. It's something that we continually work on, is how can we build that better partnership between school and home to help get things done?
Worry about your kids, Dave and Kristen, I worry, I worry about your kids in particular in a hybrid model more so than M H S. Because I think the maturity level of seventh and eighth graders to be self-motivated and do what they need to do on their own on those days off. Is in order of magnitude less than what, uh, a ninth through 12th grader has, right? I mean, they have to develop those skills if they're going to go to college or to work.
For sure.
It's a big transition from sixth grade when you have one, two, three teachers, or maybe you're at St. Francis. And now you're in Miller with 800 and some kids and seven or eight teachers. It's a, it's a tough change for any child. And then you throw COVID and.
Which.
Sblock and everything else on top of it. And I think that if I were a parent of a seventh grader, it would be tough right now. Because I wouldn't know if they were busy enough or doing enough or growing enough. And I think that's every parent's lament right now is that, you know, we don't know the long-term implications of, of what COVID. And all of the changes it's made on our system are going to have on our individual children.
And, and I've, I've said this to you before, Lisa, that I'll say it to you guys, I haven't said it to you before. I mean, I think that the work that the whole district has done in trying to make this work, whether it's virtual or the, when we were off, uh, last year is like, it's been awesome. And so I'm not trying to fault you for that. I'm just awful worried that we're, we're not, we're not doing right. That we can push the boundary of getting kids back to class and not significantly, um, impact the public health. And that's, I feel like we're trying, that you made a recommendation at the last board meeting. And we're trying to push that recommendation that is all about health and less about the balance between health and educational efficacy. And that's where I think the decision needs to be made. How, how much can we get them back to class and how soon without significantly impacting public health?
And I.
Can we do more than what we're doing now or are we doing the most that we can do?
Get crystal ball then, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, oh boy, I wish we could answer that, you know, with, with confidence. I, I think.
I think we can do a better job at raising our educational game than we can.
For sure.
Knowing the unknown of the virus and the spread within the community and schools. And so.
For sure.
That isn't any of our expertise. So I want to follow the guidance and expertise in that regard because it's worked so far. Our numbers are amazing in terms of our kids and their safety and our staff. Our academic achievement, I don't feel as great about, but I do know that change takes time. I mean, the book we're reading right now will tell you right that for sure. Like the fact that we as a system, we're supposed to flip like this on, and we did, we flipped, but it's not without bumps and we can do better. And I think our parents know that too and they're pushing us. And so I'm glad that parents are.
Yeah.
Reaching out and asking questions and, I mean, for Pete's sake, ask the principals, ask the teachers too. Because they, if they don't know, they can't fix it.
And I think conferences did a good job of just explaining to some of that. Because most of the parents are our age and they're, this is new to them, a hybrid system, a block system, and this, so that. And I think conferences was really good with just being able to talk to teachers of what it looks like. And maybe some of those at-home expectations that they maybe didn't understand from the family Miller minute. Or they didn't understand from just context from teachers that they really got that face-to-face, even if it was on a computer, that face-to-face. This is what that A B schedule looks like. This is what we're really expecting of kids when they're at home. Yeah, and this is what your Google Classroom is going to look like. And this is what it looks like for a parent and this is what it looks like as a student. And just really helping engage those parents in that. And I don't discount what you say at all, like, you know, I, I don't one bit. Like Dave said though, it's, it, it's, we don't know, we don't know. And Lisa as well, we just don't know. And that's the hardest thing, that's the hardest thing to work out right now.
I think, I think, I mean, I, I'm extraordinarily proud of the efforts that everyone has made to implement, um, our return to learn plan. And to implement effectively the mitigation strategies. I think it's a combination of all these things that we've been talking about, both the structures of the days as well as the. Things that are happening with the mask wearing and the social distancing of which we know is not going to be able to happen once we bring everybody back. Um, what concerns me, as I shared at the last meeting, is that. Everybody has talked since the inception of this about their concerns of what's going to happen with the virus heading into the, the cold and flu season. And including the med, and the medical professionals particularly. And I just think the risk is not worth the reward of trying at the quarter to, to change and bring everybody back. I absolutely positively hope that we're in a position at semester to bring everybody back. That we've, you know, we've gone through the first couple of months of the cold and flu season. And we've done it as successfully or nearly as successfully as we've been able to do thus far. I think if anybody has a chance of doing that, it's us because I fully believe we're doing more than most everybody else. To protect our kids and protect our employees. And, and I've said this before as well, it, it's not going to be our kids getting sick. That's likely going to put us in a really bad position with having to close classrooms or schools down. It's going to be the employees. Because even with the minimal number of students and staff that have been negatively impacted with, uh, COVID. When you, when you take into consideration the leaves that we've had to, to have employees take, you know, to, um. Protect everybody because of the symptoms or, or the potential close contact situations they've had. Our people, part of their stress is that they're doing everything in their power to help each other. By covering classes, by teaching two classes, you know, virtually at the same time. Uh, by subbing for their, during their prep times for somebody that needs a class covered and that sort of thing. I, I think it's, I think keeping our adults healthy more so than the kids is what's going to lead to us not having to shut classrooms down. To shut schools down and possibly shut the district down. So, um, but then again, I am, I am greatly concerned too about student health. Because as, as we learned, the older the kids, more potential for the ill effects of, um, the virus. You know, the, the high school kids particularly stand the chance of, um, having similar experiences to adults, um, that get the virus. And, and that's where the concerns really lie. I think, you know, we're structured extraordinarily well K through six to be able to protect people and having everybody back. We're not as fortunate at the secondary level based on the number of students, the size of those rooms and schools, uh, the nature of them having to mix. You know, right now, at most on a given day, they're probably mixing with 60 to 80 kids. Soon as we bring everybody back, that all of a sudden becomes double, you know, which increases the risk that somebody that they're going to be around may be carrying the virus unknowingly. And thus create a situation, so. Um, but, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm happy to go on the record in saying, I'm hoping and planning. That as we head into the second semester, um, we have an opportunity to recalibrate. Uh, we have an opportunity again to provide parents the option, everybody's coming back or you have that virtual option. Um, but I think we need, I personally believe that we need to stay the course that we've been on with a hybrid model. Knowing that we're going to have to continue to work our tails off to, to get, uh, engaged with these parents and the kids that aren't doing what they need to be doing. And making it crystal clear what the ramifications are of them not taking advantage of their education.
Okay, I'll do B one better, not even 50 words, but one, I'll take one, one answer, one word answer. If there, there's end of this pandemic and we can get rid of hybrid and, uh, virtual learning. Would there be any validity to, um, looking at the benefits of block scheduling? Would you consider that in the future?
Yes, one word answer. I won the prize.
You know, the, I mean, back in July and August, we as a board, on your recommendation, made the decision. We're going to send kids back to school in this hybrid model with a virtual choice. And we did it because our 14-day positivity rate was below 15%. And we said, oh, well, because of that, we should go back. And now we're somewhere between three and five and we're saying we should be just the same. And you, and, and you say, because we're going into cold, cold and flu season and there's an unknown there. Which I appreciate, and I appreciate your thought process there. But if we're waiting until January because we think that cold and flu season might be different or better? Well, it hasn't even hardly started then, we've got most of the winter left then. So, uh, I mean, it seems like the facts are that we went back when it was 15%. We're way down now. If, 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 uh, if we were to strike a compromise, to me, the right compromise would be the Miller kids should go back. Leave the high school kids in hybrid. That would, that would be what I would think would be the right thing to do.
I guess, Mike, I'm looking at what they said about their improvement in behavior and their improvement in attendance. Having smaller classes in the block scheduling and the students feeling like they have more teacher time and more teacher interaction. And I would like to give this a little longer. I think we had that long period of time, we had that, that voluntary where a lot of students didn't participate at all. Then we go into this and parents aren't familiar with Google Classroom, the students are just getting used to it. There are problems with standardization of language. I think we need to give it a little bit longer. We may find this actually works better than what we had before, but we won't know if we don't give it a little more time.
Yeah, I mean, there are all kinds of incidental benefits, I mean, that we have, uh, uh, understood. I mean, like with our, our level of engagement, and, and I don't know how much of that we can attribute to block scheduling, how much we contribute to hybrid model. But we have had a, a bigger opportunity for our J C L O Ryan O'Neal and our behavior interventionist Chad Spear to make more home visits. To get out to kids who hadn't come to school and get them to school. And that, that identify, that identified difference in 1920 to now has, has really been a, a huge plus for us. And I think that's a lot of what you were just talking about.
And I would like to say too that Dr. Shute's comment about hoping, like, Mike, I just want you to know that I'm more than a hopper, so I, I'm a scheduler. So I'm sitting and thinking that, I mean, I appreciate the hope, but I want, you know, we have one board meeting in January, right? And second semester starts January 25th. So this is actually a December board meeting topic, which is peak flu season, right, December? But I also know how hard the high school and middle school principals will have to work to get classes put back together in a safe way when we bring kids back. Schedules, serving kids with special needs, changing bus routes, figuring out ways our food service can serve everyone simultaneously. Like, we, um, we can't just turn this over overnight. And so I'm in my mind going, okay, and wait a minute, we still have to take at least 10 days or so. And people were furious with us in August when we gave them a deadline to choose virtual or our plan. You know, that was too much to decide and they didn't know what they wanted. So when is it fair to ask parents, is it after Thanksgiving? Say, hey, the board's going to be deciding in December, do you want to stay virtual? Do you want to pick our plan? And then the question will be, what is our plan? Are we going back hybrid? Are we going back in person? So, you know, there's just so many things that we wish we had a glass of ball for. Because, um, there's a lot of decisions have to be made and they're not things that we can, um, change overnight. So I appreciate that.
I asked Dr. Shute, what this looks like if we did go back fully in person and then our positivity rate spikes because it's cold and flu season. What happens? Do we shift on a dime, kind of like you were describing? And, uh, no, we don't, obviously. Um, so if we're all back in person, then the positivity rate goes back up. Then we're on required remote learning for a period of time, which I don't know that, that sounds very attractive as a parent. But, I mean, I get, you know, um, just knowing that that could happen in January, February gives me some pause with it as well, um, obviously.
And a lot of districts, especially UENs, are looking at high school kids as their own entity. So they maybe have the maturity level regardless to handle this learning in, in a hybrid or virtual way. And you're right, it's the middle schoolers that leave us a little challenged, because maybe just adolescents in general, that age, are not the most self-directed or organized little people or organized students we'd like them to be. But we are building that system for them as we go.
Did you have any information in your last few slides that needs to be shared?
That we haven't talked about at nauseous.
Oh, no, these guys have to go. Any other questions?
I mean, if, if there's nothing new in those slides...
I would say the high school's information was similar, that Jackie had written about the things with communication and language and routines.
I would agree that the discussion here is actually, there's...
Thanks, Dan.
What you have, can I just...
Absolutely. You...
For two minutes, Dan.
Yep, one minute. Absolutely appreciate the conversations, and you guys were spot on trying to figure this thing out. And we are, as Kristin and Dave, the, the high school, basically the same trends on behavior, way down, attendance looking good. The mitigation strategies have, have worked, kept our kids pretty safe. But there's really, the, the issues are basically the same. We are working hard, as Miller is, to engage students, those that haven't been engaging. And we're, we're getting ground, we're, we're moving forward. And there's still a lot of things I think we can accomplish in the next 12 weeks. Helping in that student agency, that getting kids to, to be self-starters, communicating the skills that they're learning right now are great skills for life. So I, I appreciate the conversation. I think there's really nothing more to add. Is Jackie on also? Is she on the line here?
Yeah, she is.
You may want to...
Jackie, do you have anything to add?
Just that I have a great administrative team and did a wonderful job presenting all the information that we just got.
Can I, can I make a comment, Dan? The, I have a lot of experience with this, because I've been going through this with my son. And so, one of the comments about the number of online platforms you use. So, he's, just one kid, he's got one class in Google Classroom, he's got four classes in Canvas, he's got one class in Savas, and you, you look it up, all his grades on Infinite Campus. And so you have to manage all four of those in tandem, and the four that are on Canvas, which, you know, is really nice, you know, some teach, every teacher uses it in a different way. And so some teachers, you have to go in one spot to see what the homework is. Some teachers you have to go in another. Some are really good about posting YouTube videos right there. Others really aren't very good about that. And so if there's a professional development or some, like, standard, here's what we're going to use for the platform, and here's how you're going to use that platform to make it as easy as possible for a kid or a parent to navigate this world. Because right now, it even takes me like, you know, a long time on a whiteboard in my boardroom, you know, every other morning to go through it with Owen to figure it out, you know?
Yep, absolutely. We see that as the number one focus for training right now. And I think Jackie might be able to, to speak to that.
Jackie?
Yeah, yeah, we are prepared to start doing a Canvas course audit, Mr. Miller, with our teachers and provide them with feedback. Our thought exchange with our hybrid students was loud and clear. The top 10 responses from our students and the ones that were given stars and liked and that kind of stuff, all re-related explicitly to not knowing exactly what to do at home and what to do in school. So we have developed an expectation that we shared with them a couple of weeks ago, and then now we're ready to go in and give them feedback on that. Savas, that one that you mentioned, is actually a textbook platform. So Owen might also be, I can't remember, I think it might be in an honor, so maybe not. The English curriculum was just adopted this year too, so that's another textbook platform. So the more digital books that we use, the more of those types of platforms you will see. And I was a little surprised when you said Google Classroom, so I might be peeking in the schedule and maybe having a conversation with somebody, because we did ask all teachers to move away from Google. So I agree with you, the teachers who are doing Canvas are doing good things, but they're all over the place. And so that's part of our learning curve, is to straighten that out. And we continue to provide professional development. They had just a tad bit of that on the 28th, and we have lots, and they have a professional development course in, in Canvas that has lots of slides and presentations that our wonderful instructional coaches have made for them. So it's, it's, there's just a lot of, of learning that's going on. And as Dr. Stevenson said, we will continue to focus on those things during our professional development.
And I would just also say that most of these things, like learning how to effectively utilize Canvas, or Google Classroom, or teaching in the block, all of these things generally would have like a year's worth of front-loading and professional development in order to best prepare people to implement. Our, our people have had, all do that within a very short period of time in terms of navigate the learning curve, figure out how to implement it, and some of it is learning to get better as we go. I'm extraordinarily proud of the way they've handled it. There's been very minimal complaining, but there's a lot of stress and anxiety. There's no question about that, and that's something that we've heard loud and clear. So, you know, I think to a certain extent, we just have to ask people to continue to be patient and to trust and believe that we're continuing to try to improve, to, to teach better and to have kids learn better.
That feedback's really important, though, because it, it truly drives how we plan and what we do. So once we know, like, from the user side, the kids say this is tough, and then parents are saying a similar thing. I mean, you could chalk it up to, well, that's a life lesson, because when you go to college, professors will be like that, or you'll have a boss or clients who have different styles, but they're kids. And so we want to make sure that we set them up for success. And if that's organizing our classrooms to load from most current to least current, then that's an easy flip of switch we can do.
Well, and possibly integrating the textbook platform into your Canvas.
Yes, correct, yep. Everybody's, yeah, there's lots of bells and whistles, but it's trying to get them to all fit into one...
It is.
...solid home base.
And I'd actually heard a teacher express frustration, because she was working across different platforms for different classes. But I think, Aaron hit it on the head, you're, you're trying to integrate a lot of things very quickly that normally people would set up slowly.
Dr. Shute, this is listed as an action item?
Yeah, so, as I had shared at the last meeting, I still would have the recommendation that the board approve our continuing in our current mode of operation through the second quarter, which would be hybrid seven through 12.
I have a motion to that.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries five, four, one.
No, it's not here. Right, three, one?
No, four. One, two, three, four. You didn't count me, did you?
Two, three, four.
Uh huh.
Four.
Are you doing hybrid or virtual? I don't know about the rest of you, but we're going to take a five-minute break before we go on and talk about special ed deficit, because you need to be fired up.
Thanks for joining, Jackie.
No, 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 I didn't mean to be rude. I know it came off as rude. I didn't mean to be like that.
No, you weren't. I interrupted, actually. No, I don't do it.
But...
No, and I understand entirely where you're coming from.
We're all excited to be back.
I'm excited to be able to talk to you guys about the special ed deficit.
We're excited.
Well, I appreciate that.
It's funny. It's just, there's... It's kind of roaming tonight, not staying in one spot. It's like he's like, wanting to get kicked off the roof.
I'm waiting for, for a message from a medical professional. But I may just get a call.
Okay.
If it's all right, I'm going to go ahead and get started.
Sure. We're all delighted to hear about the special ed deficit.
Thank you. I'm real excited to be here. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about seeking spending authority from the School Budget Review Committee to address the deficit in special education. So a little bit of background information, just for a reminder, since we usually have this conversation once a year, certain educational programs, like special education, they have mechanisms to recover costs due to a lack of federal or state funding. Special education happens to be one of those. Now, in the federal law, it says that 40% of special education costs will be covered by the federal government. But in reality, that's never happened. 13% is the closest they've been able to ever get. So there are additional costs and expenses.
Open it.
So there are additional costs and expenses associated. And the way, the Marshalltown, like the vast majority of districts across the state do, is we have to take advantage of the mechanism annually to address the, the special ed deficit. So how do we find out the funding? How, where's the money come from? Well, every student who is eligible for special education services receives an IEP or Individualized Education Plan. And the IEP outlines what the children's educational disability needs are within an educational setting. So that's our buses, our schools, if they're out for activities, how can we support them in those environments as well? And then based on those services, the Department of Education has this massive rubric that they ask our AEA system to apply. And they read through the IEP, and they look at all the services listed in there, and they apply the rubric, and then they assign what we call a level. At the bottom, you'll see there's one of three levels that a IEP most likely receives. Level one, level two, or level three. Now, if you have a level one IEP, what it means is it takes the general ed funding, and then it gets a multiplier. So level one, the multiplier is 1.72%. And after doing the math, you can see the total funding a child with a disability receives, and how that splits out between their gen ed funds and their special ed funds. Paulette, anything else you want to add to that?
You're doing great.
Okay, just checking. And so the higher the level, the more funds generated. And usually, the level is associated with the amount of services or needs. So our kids with more significant disabilities, who have things like their own nurse, have specialized technology equipment, spend almost all their day in a special education setting with maybe a parent educator supporting them. Those kinds of services tend to generate higher weighted IEPs. So our expenditures during the last school year, during 1920, we provided services to 659 kids between the ages of three and 21. That's about 12% of our total enrollment for that year. Now, we employ 70 special education teachers, and on average, I would say 90 special education-funded parent educators. So 73% of the funds that we receive through those weightings on that last slide, they go to salaries and benefits. And then the remaining funds go to things like specialized equipment, instructional materials, contracted services, and some general program expenditures.
So Matt, 12.2% of our student population receives services. What's the state average?
Last year, it was 14 and a half. So we tend to run either right at or just under the state average. Adam, if you will, please. Thank you. So you can see how our special ed costs have looked over time. And for the last several years, I was excited to come and talk to the board about, we're making ground in meeting our kids' needs, but having, you know, having also a smaller amount of deficit. Unfortunately, today I'm here to talk to you about our deficit increased by over $600,000 in last year. And in a second, I'm going to explain to you why. So when we closed school right around spring break time, we had a variety of things that usually generate funds that just stopped. So Medicaid is one. If you remember, I've talked to the board about Medicaid services we receive through timberline billing. And Medicaid is a service that we get reimbursed for based on things we do with kids. And those services are based on health support, as well as behavioral supports. Well, when students aren't in buildings, we can't provide those supports or services. And so the funding stops. So $189,000, just over $189,000, lower than the prior year of Medicaid reimbursement was received by the district. So that was significant. We also chose to continue to pay our parent educators during service time when students weren't in session. And so there were expenses and costs with that. Including, this was the first year we offered our parent educators insurance. And so that insurance, because they're, these were all special ed funds, impacts a special ed deficit. And so that was a $493,000 impact. We had a number of three-year-old students who were identified for disability services, to the point where we needed to create a specialized program for them. For years, we had blended them in with our four-year-old preschool program, but we found that wasn't appropriate at this point. And so anytime you start up a new program, there are also costs with that, bringing a new teacher on, getting the room set up, some of those equipments. Some things did go well, though. We did see an overall revenue increase of $235,000. So if I'm looking at a crystal ball, I would have been excited to sit here and tell you that we would have seen our deficit go down even a little bit more if everything would have remained consistent between the years. We saw a mileage, a decrease in our mileage expense, our tuition out cost decreased, and we saw a change in our teacher salaries decrease. And I think that's because we continue to see our veteran teachers retire, and so we're bringing on newer and newer teachers. So we're still continuing to take what we think are the right steps to address the deficit. We're trying to look at ways to be more efficient and effective with our spending. We continue to look at our needs every year at each building and make sure we align staff and services to those locations. We're continuing to work with our AEA, which is our Area Education Agency, to make sure that our IEPs are getting appropriately funded. In fact, that time is coming up here very soon. And then we continue to work to maximize our opportunities for Medicaid reimbursement. Been talking with Paulette about what does this potentially mean for property tax rate? Calculations were, you know, approximately 50% impact on property tax.
Not percent.
What's that?
Not percent.
Fifty cent.
Sorry. Fifty cent. Thank you.
I can start something.
Sorry.
I'm going to reduce those salaries even further.
And so what I'm here to do tonight is to ask the board for permission to seek authority from the School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth in supplemental state aid for the amount of $2,359,091. What questions do you have?
Where does that money come from?
Property tax.
Okay, so you're talking about raising the property tax.
I'll let Paulette talk a little bit about the implications.
Right, so right now, we are asking just to get the authority back from the School Budget Review Committee. When we ask for authority, that does not come with the funding. So the funding, your, your special ed deficit is 100% funded by property taxes. And so when we go through the aid and levy in the budgeting process for next year, when we start that in January, part of the, the impact on the property tax rate will be getting, you know, asking for that $2.4 million back, because we've already spent it. So we have to ask for that back through a cash reserve levy. That's how it impacts our property tax rate. So right now, you're just... So right now, you're just giving approval to ask for the authority back, and then we'll be asking for approval to get the cash to fund that through the certified budget process.
We are anticipating for our special ed deficit to go down again next year as some of these things balance out, as well as we've already learned that we have a revenue increase of just over $900,000 from what we had a year ago.
Paulette, in the event that after the election or any time second stimulus package is approved, would you anticipate that it'd be permissible to offset some of those costs, like, for example, the nearly $200,000 that we were not able to get in Medicaid reimbursement as a result of continuing, you know, kids not being in school and yet continuing people to work during that time?
I have not read or heard of anything that would offset special ed through the CARES Act or anything.
That particular element was something that I did bring to the attention of our legislators last spring and then reminded them again this fall when there were significant pressures just to continue to pay people not to work because there, you know, there were districts that were contemplating furloughing or laying off people, knowing that they'd actually do as well, if not better, you know, unemployment than continuing to be employed and not have work to do. But under the contention that we had already been given the money to pay the people, we should just continue to pay them. But one of the ramifications was we couldn't get Medicaid reimbursement upwards of close to $200,000 to offset some of those expenses as we would have in the past. And the other thing that I would say is that for years and years, we've struggled to hire high quality and to fully fill all of our positions with those parent educator positions. And, you know, we recognize the need to provide them free and/or affordable insurance in addition to paying them a fair salary in order to hopefully get high-quality people and sustain them or retain them. So, again, we knew that that was going to have an impact back when those decisions were made. Other questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve the seeking authority from the SBRC for allowable growth in supplemental ed for the negative special education balance as presented?
Salute.
Second.
Ayman Anteet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
And it was only because we took a break and everybody could get a cookie. Or to you ladies, do you have some information you'd like to share with us? You didn't think we'd ever get to you tonight, did you?
Okay. Well, a lot of the events that have been happening at Marshalltown have been sporting events because, you know, Corona and we have to social distance. So, starting off with football, the varsity team will be playing Urbendale this Friday in its first round of playoffs. And this will be held at the Urbendale High School. Is this the high school? Okay. Yeah. This, yeah, it'll be an away game. And then for girls swimming and diving, this last weekend, we had a diving invite that was held at the Y. And my teammates, Hannah Taylor, actually broke the record for 11 dives, and she placed fourth. And then we will have a diving and swimming conference at Ford Dodge, which will be held Tuesday and Thursday. Next slide. Then the cross-country conference was held this last Thursday for both the boys and the girls, and they both placed 6 out of 7. And then their state qualifier meet will be this Thursday at MCC.
We could give you another job, Adam, if you'd like.
Okay. And then this is just from last week because we obviously didn't have a board meeting last week, so.
And then the marching band had their extravaganza show this year. This is just an event to show off their marching show and their color guard performed. And it was Monday the 12th, and it was at MHS at the football field, and it was a pretty good event.
Okay. And then this is coming up this week. So we have our NHS blood drive, which is led by Noah Hermanson and a couple other MHS seniors. And it's taking place this Wednesday and Thursday, so that way both the red group and the blue group will be able to participate. And that's about it for Marshalltown or the high school right now.
Questions for our student reps? Thank you very much for bringing us up to date. Is anybody dying to talk about the book?
He works in pretty late.
I have a motion to table until next meeting.
So moved.
I second. I want to second under one condition, though. I'm dying to know the innovations that the superintendent, our revolutionary superintendent is going to propose, so I got to hear about that.
Watch us on our broadcast.
I'd be happy to second without the.
With a caveat, yeah.
I'll just read his blog.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Aye.
No.
Just to be contentious.
Um, I'm sorry. The meeting's just been long. I don't.
It has. Do we want to do Hesha Quality next time, too? I could.
I think that the book deserves our undivided attention, and it's been kind of taken already tonight, so.
Okay. That's fine.
I hope you don't.
It's written down. It'll stay there till next time.
I, yes. So I didn't ask the superintendent if that was okay, but too bad.
You're the boss.
Yeah. Only here. Dr. Schudie.
Yeah, so as a result of Bob's resignation from the board, we have a vacancy, and it's not timely as it relates to the upcoming elections. So we have an opportunity to make an appointment, and my recommendation is that we appoint Nicholas Nico Aguirre to fill the vacancy. I think most of you know Nico as he filled the position under appointment when Ross Harris stepped off the board due to health reasons a while back. We went through a full vetting process with interviews and such before that appointment had been made. Nico was also the only other person to run in the last election, and I have spoken to him and is very interested in filling that position for the next year if the board approves that appointment. If the board approves the appointment this evening, then we need to publish the appointment, I think. Is that right, Paulette? And then there's a 14-day period for which the general public could petition to have a special election. A special election, I believe, costs about $15,000 to the district in order to run. I personally don't think that there's a need or a reason to, and I think there's a lot of reason why Nico at this point in time would be a good fit to fill in for Bob prior to the next election in November 2021. At that time, there would be the remaining two years on Bob's term that would be up for reelection as well as potentially, well, as well as I think three other board positions would be up for reelection as well.
Questions for Dr. Schudie? I have a motion to appoint Nicholas Aguirre to fill the vacancy of Bob Anteet.
Move for approval.
Second. Actually, I think we do that at the next meeting because this was just an information. This wasn't an action item.
Okay. Well, all in favor say aye anyway.
Aye.
Just practicing up for an act.
As the dress rehearsal.
Oh, my. Okay. Now, looking at some more obsolete equipment, there are two district vehicles that would rise above our cutoff point of 5,000. Is that right?
That is correct. Under Iowa code, if we're to sell for more than 5,000, we have to publish notice for
May I have a motion to adopt a resolution announcing the proposed sale of these two vehicles and publish notice at the time and place of a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. End policies, which we were to start at 6:05.
So we have four policies that are before you for the third time under a second reading: 209.1 Development Policy, 209.2 Adoption of Policy, 209.3 Disseminating of Policy, and 209.4 Suspension of Policy. And I would, these were policies that did not exist in our policy manual that IASB recommends. I would recommend approving them.
Questions? I have a motion to adopt these four policies.
Sommo.
Second.
Altus Anteet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
The two policies that Jan had for the last meeting, 203.2 Adoption of Administration Rules and Regulations, and 203.4 Ad hoc Committees, we amended those. We also corrected some typos from the last meeting, and I would recommend that the board approve those and waive a second reading.
We didn't have those at the, did we have those?
Yeah, they were.
We did. There were some type, there were typos, but I didn't present them. I just sent them to Thorne Gary.
Okay. All right. I have a motion to amend policies 203 to now 208 and 203.4 and waive the second reading.
Salute.
Second.
Ayman Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 6-0.
Also, as a first reading that was reviewed at the last meeting, 208 E1 Ad hoc Committees Exhibit recommending adoption of this, no changes from the last meeting. I don't know if you want that to come back for a second reading or not.
It was presented at the last meeting?
Yes, under review.
May I have a motion to adopt 208 E1 and waive the second reading?
Sommo.
Second.
Altus Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
And Bob had a couple policies to review in his last board meeting.
So it is recommended, looking at 203.5 School Improvement Advisory Committee, that we mirror the Iowa code and renumber to 103.1 under long-range needs. The term character education would be updated to social emotional learning. There is no matching IASB policy. And then also, 203.7 Administration of the Absence of Policy, we recommend amending the policy to match IASB policy 209.5.
Okay, so those will need to come back. Are there questions for Bob or Dr. Schudie at this time?
And we also had 314.1 Administrator Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Program. The recommendation there is to delete the date for which we would make the announcement. We had done that on the other employee group policies prior and must have just missed that one. But it's better not to have a committal date because we really need to know the certified enrollment and its effect on the budget as part of the decision-making for that. We certified last Thursday, but we haven't been given the green light to publicize yet what that certification number is. And so hopefully, within the next week or two, we'll be able to do that, and then we can bring forward our recommendation, one way or the other, with.
Would you be willing to amend this policy by just deleting that date, or do you want it to come back? I have a motion to amend.
So moved.
Second.
Ayman Faltes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And waive the second reading.
Waive the first reading?
We waived the whole shooting match.
No reading here.
It's gone.
All right.
Okay. Anything of note, Mr. Sotters? One more job.
So we have been, it's been very busy with the STEM Best Grant work. I have, it's been a joy to be in Joe's classroom. Last week, I was able to begin with interviewing skills. We kind of went over the concepts of those, and then this week, I'm planning to sort of, we're going to pair them up and see how they do. So that'll be interesting. I'll be taking notes on, kind of doing my best impersonation of an actual teacher, you know, as much fun as that is nowadays. So I'm really excited and I'm happy to be doing that work. Connected to that, we have been planning for a, sort of an introduction video for that grant and the partnerships here in the community that we are, that we formed and who are helping us with, who will be supporting us, especially next semester, with that grant. So that introductory video is basically to show, you know, the MechDines and the Marshalltown, not Marshalltown Company anymore, right? It's just Marshalltown. Marshalltown, Emerson, other partners of ours, kind of what we're doing now in preparation, and then the goal of the entire project, the entire grant. So we've had a couple of meetings planning that out, and I'm planning to go around and take some photo stills for the video. We're going to have folks from Future Ready Iowa, from STEM Best, they're going to contribute to that video as well. So we're excited for that. Another video project that I am embarking on is related to career and technical education. It's going to focus on that on alumni who have obviously graduated Marshalltown High School or MLA and are currently having successful careers. And I'm happy to say that there are many folks who fit that description. And whether they graduated back in the '90s, they graduated a year or two ago, it's, you know, we have a good group of people. So those are just a few of the big projects I'm working on right now. As far as updates go, we have, the big one coming up here is October 27th. We have, of course, the court, the Marshalltown Court Complex opening, and we're excited for that. I think the nets are in, so it's starting to really come together, starting to look like what it'll look like when people are out there playing on it. So I'll be excited to be there, take some pictures, cover that. So that's the, that's the big event coming up here. Do you guys have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Looking at reminders, we have an Equity Committee meeting coming up, a Zoom meeting. The ribbon-cutting ceremony, as Adam just mentioned. School Improvement Advisory Committee on the 23rd, is that a Zoom meeting, too?
I don't think so. I think that one's in person, isn't it? I can't remember. I want it. Zoom?
Yeah, it's. Yeah, it's Corina and Jan. And the Law Committee is having a virtual meeting also on the 26th. And the Auditorium Foundation meeting will be in April.
But we had a meeting.
But that'll come up here in just a minute, yeah.
It does say it's a Zoom meeting on my November 1.
Pardon me?
The CIOC is Zoom. I just looked it up on my.
I get to do the policies for next time. Yippee skippy. Monday, the 2nd, November 2nd is our next board meeting. Looking at committee reports, Theron's going to tell us about the last Auditorium Foundation meeting that we had.
Yeah, so the Auditorium Foundation meets twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring.
Two times too often.
We had a really productive meeting, and they, they're getting ready to embark on the implementation of new carpet in the front foyer. I think that's pretty close to original carpet that's in the auditorium, as well as some inside the auditorium. It's going to be a multi-phase thing over time. And then they're also, I think, getting pretty close to announcing a fundraising effort to try to purchase and implement public art somewhere in the front of the auditorium, similar to like drills on the Roundhouse side, but not the same, but something along those lines in order to draw and bring attention to the facility as well. The board had approved, I think it was last year, the renaming to the Marshalltown Performing Arts Center, and there'll be new signage that will be going up as well. I'm not quite sure if that will happen in conjunction with the public art or ahead of it, but that's something that'll be coming, too. I know that, I think Nagel Signs is working on that.
New officers for the foundation, Gary Shout is the president-elect, Bonnie Lowry, vice president.
Larry Fontz, treasurer secretary.
Betsy.
Betsy Mackey.
The meeting was an hour and a half long, and Theron summarized that in less than two minutes. I just want, pretty good for Theron, too.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Yes, yes, uh-huh. What have we done tonight to improve education for the students in Marshalltown?
I think we had a good discussion about the Return to Learn Plan.
Going to pay the special ed deficit?
And work on standardizing the platforms at the high school.
So I won't take your whole whiteboard to chart it all out. My quote for this evening comes from Martin Luther King Jr. He says, "We must accept finite disappointment, but we must never lose infinite hope."
May I have permission to add to your quote?
Pardon me?
Can I add a quote of my own?
Sure.
I won't do it again. There is a trend sometimes in thinking about education as being how it is practical. Sometimes that's emphasized in like STEM learning. And I'm a strong proponent of STEM, but I want to quote from the University of Northern Colorado very quickly. Education encourages critical thinking, communication, creative problem-solving, self-expression, innovative research, and lifelong learning, all skills that are central to not only a great career, but a well-lived life. So I would encourage you to. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
McGinnis.
I didn't do it.
Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Nay.
Nighty night, kids.
Bob, thank you for your tenure.